The following program is sponsored by The Greek. Ely's Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely. And brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media and Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, October 10th, 2019.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you believe we have anybody here for the invocation? So we'll move on to the call.
Mayor Rockerson.
President.
Councilwoman Flingus.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
Here.
Councilwoman Spear.
Here.
Councilman Nollard.
Here.
Councilman DeBecker.
Here.
Public Works Supervisor, Mr. Cracker.
Here.
Thank you, Emily.
Here.
Building Official, Richardson.
Here.
City Attorney, Quayle.
Here.
With that, we'll move on to public comment. You have three minutes for public comment. Please state your name. And when you reach the buzzer, please.
I was here last month, so I'm going to make this brief. It was when my dog was dying so horribly. And because it was after hours, there was no one to euthanize him. And yet, I held him for three hours as he led the death through the mouth. And no, there was no veterinarian, nobody to help him. But I've been, and I know most of you inherited this situation. But I've been asking around and listening. And the dog catcher whom I have met, and I can't remember his name because I took some of my dog's excess food out to the dog pound. But I, I don't know him personally, so this is not against him. But he had been trained in euthanization and tranquilization for just the situation I was in. But he was not allowed to come out. He is not allowed to come out on calls because the substance he uses has to be kept to euthanize dogs or tranquilize them, and the two should go together. Is, he has been let, leave it locked up in the dog pound because it is a, oh, what do they call it when it's addictive substance?
I thought.
He isn't allowed to use it. And I've talked with several people in the authority position to know what they're talking about. And he's already trained, but there's a question how they would get paid for it or how they could do it. But to put a dog or any animal down and say to them, "That hell, that that dog went through", would have been worth $200, $300. And I know the city has the power. They could collect it from people who would have a real emergency and then tried to grenade on the payload. That was one issue that kept coming up. Well, how would we get paid for it? The man is already trained. He has the facilities. He has the ability. That night, when my dog died, I would have paid more than that. And I had loans from the bank already for his medical care. And he died before I could arrange for the type of care he needed, which is not available even during business hours of our local veterinarians. And it's cruel. Besides that, there, I wanted my dog to be cremated so that our ashes could be scattered together. But there's no crematorium here either. Eurydice is not available. It's not the best arrangements that they have. And if nothing else, we could use a co-governor for a crematorium.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you bringing this to our attention.
I beg your pardon?
We appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
But it's already, already trained, and there's no help.
Thank you.
And I guess my three minutes are up now.
They pay on me.
Okay. That's a record for me.
Any other public comment?
We need a public pet cemetery.
You're in one now.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Cheater. This is.
Spencer Costello.
And we're here from Trackbeat Exchange, which is the harm reduction program that's located in Clark County, Nevada. And we've been working with the Southern Nevada Health District under some state grants for a little over a year now to talk about harm reduction throughout the state of Nevada. So our goal is to talk to local communities about disease risk as well as risk of overdose and opioid and substance use misuse in the community. And then also to talk to communities about how we might be able to work together to find out what's going on in the community and help solve those problems. Specifically, what we're looking for today is the potential or the ability to be able to come back at a later date to present some data to the city council as well as to share more information with you about some of the programs that we have to offer. And then also find out if they might be of interest or how we can roll out some of those programs here in Nevada.
Any more public comment?
Mr. Mayor, in Rowan Narancos' letter to the city dated October 3rd, 2019 regarding the item number two sewer plant observations concerning item E, calling upon conditions regarding removing of impounded vehicles. Two vehicles removed from my property at 490 High Street. They were older vehicles, considered antiques valued at several thousand dollars. Restored even more. In the past, I've requested the complete best of all vehicles that were taken from private property, no matter who it is. I want to know who authorized that? When did the council approve that action? Who removed the vehicles? And at which location are they located or stored now? Hopefully, the city didn't sell any of those vehicles. One could consider that net theft. Why is the city and the city clerk Jennifer Lee as well as others before her selectively enforced the law? Councilwoman Flingus is allowed to keep his vehicles, which are located on the city right-of-way. Are they licensed and insured as required by, as required of others who are parked on the city right-of-way? If not, he needs to resign. That's elected enforcement of the law. He formulated a lot of those rules and regulations. You folks either have to abide by them or change them for everybody. On one hand, you're taking people's vehicles away when they're not on the street, and their his are parked on the right-of-way. No license, no insurance. You've got to clean it up, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, with all the national concern regarding vaping and its effects, who's the person who issued a business license to a vape shop that is located between two schools on Alton? Are they the same individual that owned the school that took place the Stepford Valley School within a thousand feet of liquor and gaming establishment in violation of state NRS statutes? Either you have rules and regulations or you don't. You're looking the other way, Mayor. You've got to change out some of that staff. Mr. Mayor, a few weeks ago, I asked you to look up the files of former enforcement officer Lord Phillips in regards to code violations I reported to him. Did you find that file? If so, I'm requesting a copy of that so I can see what he did, other than very little. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda, you're to consider possible lowering landfills for businesses from out of town. If the fees are too high, lower them for everyone. This board or this city council just recently increased this for the next three years for the local people, local businesses. And yet, we're going to give a break to those from out of town. The out of towners pay what they owe for business license, and they pay for one month or two. In some cases, I heard they're being paid, they're being charged for the full month. Your staff doesn't know what they're doing.
Thank you.
And now you're looking to give them a break? I need to change something, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Drew.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Ron Aronson. I'm actually, it wasn't in California. I own three pieces of property in White Pine County, and I've paid taxes in White Pine County for nearly 50 years. I'm going to piggyback on what George said. At the last meeting, Mr. Flingus had five, said that he had some vehicles on his property that were antiques that were worth 15,000 to 20,000 to 30,000 dollars. By that, so adding the same vote that George is, and I had a vehicle towed from my property, private property, two and a half years ago. It's down at the sewer, sewer plant. It's also an antique. I believe it's worth 15,000 to 20,000 dollars also. My vehicle was in the middle of a piece of property. It wasn't on the public, public right-of-way. It wasn't in the middle of the street. And I've noticed that there are plenty of vehicles that are on the street, not licensed, not towed. I also noticed that nobody in this town is out of the park. When I took the driver's license in Nevada, I realized there were two ways of parking. And one of them is not against traffic on the opposite side of the street. That's another side, another story. So what I'm asking the county is that the city either remove Mr. Flingus's vehicles and put them in the sewer district, just like sewer plant, just like mine is, or return mine to where it was. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing that, we'll move on to item three. Mayor, discussion for possible action. Approval of agenda, including removal of agenda items. I don't believe there's any changes that I was made aware of to make, unless there's any that anybody else would like to make. I will entertain a motion on this item.
I'll move this to.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Carrie, it's a word. We'll move on to item four. City Department reports. Fire chief.
You guys got a comment report? Only other thing in addition to that, Monday, we made a job offer to another guy in Reno. He did accept. He will be here starting on the 25th to his pre-employment drug screen, so. Other than that, unless you've got any questions?
So the county wasn't able to help out with any of the repairs that we needed, huh?
No.
Okay.
No. We had to take rest before Elko. None of the shops locally want to do it because that year of Ford, they says, most of the time, you've got to raise the cab to do it. None of the guys here like dealing with it. They, every one of them said, "Go see a Ford dealer." Elko is the closest place to go, so. And it's up there now. It's scheduled to be repaired on the 14th. However, we took it up early because it's doing us no good sitting out back, and they said they may be able to get it in early if they have a cancellation. On the good side, we did find it wasn't a turbo issue. It was a broken down pipe off the turbo, so still pretty extensive job to change it out, but the part is going to be a whole lot cheaper, so.
Did you have a question, Jeff?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Matt. Police chief?
You guys have our quarterly report? Just wondering if there's any questions that we need to.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
I don't think Judge Costa is here. Street clerk?
We have noticed thus that the CPG deadline has been extended to November 27th, so our third public hearing where the project is likely will actually be December 5th now. So that gives us a long time. And then I would like to bring that council's attention to this October pricing list that was sent out this afternoon from the Northwest Paper. If you'll notice, just between September and October, the price of cardboard dropped $10, so it's now $0.
Pretty cheap. Any questions? Thank you, Jennifer. City treasurer is at a training, which is out of town. City Public Works Supervisor?
I do have one thing. This morning I reported, and the compact will be back today as soon as I left that meeting. He calls up, said he won't be here today, be here tomorrow.
On the, on the landfill, in the budget, it says $50,000 for a truck. A pickup truck?
Yes. It was, I think utility truck, Jim.
About the toolbox guy or something?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mike? City water operator, we have his report. Questions or comments? City engineer, also back in the corner.
I got a report there. I don't think you guys got any questions. One of the things that I reported this morning in the utility board meeting is we're working through our conflicts for the Solom Street project. Some, there's some conflicts up on Great Basin Boulevard. So what to do with their new storm drain is going in. One of the things that they basically said on Great Basin Boulevard, that water line of ours was actually put in under an excavation permit with Endot that they have right there. So that portion of the water line, we're going to be responsible for the payment of that, even though it is a conflictous situation. A lot of our other old water lines in Everstructure is beyond the point where they had permits and everything else, and so they will be assisting us in including those things right there. That was just expressed to me, yes. We also want to pass it on to the council. That's what my crew that had passed on to me, yes, in the conversation. One of the things, some of the other things that we're dealing with, I've been dealing with, are turning quite a bit, going over some, a lot of connections in some unique situations. Also passed on some projects trying to give us the standard form for some utility investments and stuff when people want to install some of these water lines and stuff, just looking through that. What else was I saying? Those are the major things. So I don't know if there's anything else that you have any questions.
Any other questions for the engineer? Thank you, Peter.
All right, thank you.
City building officials?
I don't have anything else to add. Listen, if you have any questions.
With that, I will turn the gavel over to the mayor pro temp for item number five.
Okay, the Department of Public Safety's report.
Good afternoon, all. We are continuing to work on locomotive 81. The federal railroad administration was here today to do the annual inspection on locomotive 40, and she passed for another year's worth of service. We took a slight hit in ridership in September. We carried 1,555 passengers, who were down 151 passengers, or 8%. Year-to-date, our ridership is 10,740, or up 442 passengers, a 4% over last year. And we're tracking the same as last year, which was a record year for us. We broke 300,000 passengers. We have now carried 300,000, 30139 passengers since we started operating. We got some great publicity. We have a story in City Lab, what the transportation revolution looks like. We're also partnered with Trains Magazine. They're going to do a special photo shoot with Locomotive 40 next March. They're calling it the farewell to 40, because 40 then goes down for the 15-year inspection. And then Red Tricycle, which is a San Francisco publication, 23-happy train rides. We started something new this year. I mean, our nickname is the Haunted Ghost Train of Old Eewee. We've been doing the haunted ghost trains, but now we're doing haunted walking tours. The mayor can attest that the transportation building is haunted, along with the yard and the engine house. So we're doing some tours after dark, and we actually give little ghost meters and Coach Five, it goes off. So it's a lot of fun. That's about all I got. If anyone has any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Reports, city council. Anything to report, Michelle?
Nothing. Nothing on this one. I just wanted to mention that we have a conference on the annual conference, so I hope to have this week, but I will be there for this meeting.
Thanks, Michelle. Ernie?
Yes, I'd like to report on a meeting last night where we had drunk vehicles, county commissioner and laundry department, people from within our county that were concerned about the water, sort of the lattice grass on the, it was a very good informative meeting I do believe there was, and some of us are much, very much committed with what's going on. But the public asked a lot of good questions. There will be a jury, court hearing on November 12th, and Court Keith, I do believe, today's. Here in White Pine County, conserving the water graph in Southern Ohio, and people from our area can find out what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Number four.
Jim?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I attended all my regular assignments, meetings assigned to me. I also attended the meeting last night with Southern, dealing with Southern Ohio Water Authority and the 30-year battle on that. It's going to be really worrisome to me and probably everybody else if it goes the wrong way. You know, maybe more years to find out that it's a, we're in a tough situation here. And in tonight's issue of the Ely Daily Times, there's a very interesting article about forthcoming PILF money. And once again, the city's not going to get one guy. We have to work together with the county to try to get some of this money. You look through the article in the paper, it tells you what it's available for, including fire protection, police protection. We have not got one guy ever. So something we need to work with if we're going to survive in this community. They're already getting 27% of our general fund revenue. It's going up higher all the time. We give, you know, police protection is important, but we need to work together, and hopefully in the near future, we can revisit that agreement we have for police protection because if one side of it, it will go out. Thank you.
I have nothing to report, so we'll move on to item seven. Items for discussion, possible action of the Ely City Council as recommended by the Animal Control Advisory Board. Item one, board members, animal control officer Hayes, discussion for possible action. Approval to establish a spay-neuter voucher program paid for through the grant funds, paid for through grant funds, possibly including a refundable deposit and adoption fee increase. Chair, in the morning.
Hello. So this item we actually tabled, and the next item on the agenda, we kind of focused more on. So I didn't know if you wanted to open up that one, but this one was tabled.
Did you want? Would you like us to table this as well?
Yes, please.
That being the case, I will entertain a motion on this item. Motion to table, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a moment.
I can.
Thanks, Michelle. We'll move on to item two. Chairwoman, Robert McMurray, discussion for possible action. Approval to increase adoption fees up to $20 for cats and $60 for dogs.
So the history has been that we have offered an adoption fee at $25, which is significantly low. And we've had a lot of issues in the past with, you know, somebody will adopt an animal for 25, and then we, it's mandatory that they have to have them spayed or neutered, and sometimes that doesn't happen. And they've been trying to chase this for years. So we thought that if we raised the adoption fee to $60 and take the Maddie's fund money that we have right now, which is about 14,000, and use that to spay or neuter the animal. So when the animal leaves the shelter, they're either already spayed and neutered, and Andrew has time to take them, until somebody comes and adopts them. Or once somebody comes to adopt them, they pay that fee, and then they can set an appointment to have that dog or cat spayed or neutered. Cats, we didn't, we don't want to raise the adoption fee because you can't give a cat away. It's really hard to get them adopted out right now. But dogs, we'd like to raise the fee and ensure that they're spayed or neutered as well. So we don't have a problem of them returning to the shelter, or puppies out there that are unwanted, and then they go to the shelter anyways.
What is the current cost for that dog?
$25. It's significantly low. And I don't want to compare us to like Vegas or La Shona because, you know, we're dealing with bigger cities, and those adoption fees are a lot higher. But I believe we're kind of comparable to Elko if we raise the adoption fee to 60.
Any questions?
I would like to comment. I attended the meeting, and my personal concern was the amount of increase in dogs. And I have to sit down and rationalize if they talked about these spay and neuter fees that the outside, this is really a bargain and it needs to go up. I mean, $60, if you get an already spayed dog, cat, or a dog extremely is well worth it, so. The ladies did a great job in their career. Patch that up, my tour last, I guess, but yeah, the $60 adoption fee is still low in comparison to the cost of a professional animal having spayed and neutered in a, at least if, out of control, better.
Yeah. Dr. Eldridge is one of our board members, and she said it depends on the weight for an animal to be spayed and neutered. But it could start a dog. It could start at $90 and go up to $100, $50. So it's a, it's a really good standard still for somebody who wants to adopt. But I think if we raise the fee, we're also going to encourage people that are new responsible pet owners. If you can't spend $25 on adoption fee, you probably can afford a dog anyways. If you can't afford 60, you probably can afford a vaccination or spay and neuter. So we're just kind of trying to cover a couple bases.
So the spay and neutering will be paid by Maddie's? And then you realize that the increase of all the adoption fees goes into general fund?
Yes.
Okay. And you also realize that, right, this soapbox, the county gets 27% of that? They get, out of the $60, they're going to take 16 bucks out of the top. Just little information, food for thought. And I had a little bit, just a slight heartburn. I understand how it didn't explain to me. I was thinking some little kid saving money to adopt a dog at 25 bucks, and you probably see some light at the end of the tunnel, and then you two and a half times it, probably not going to get a dog. But again, you know, that's, you have to put a good value for it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the chairwoman? I'll call for a motion on this item.
I'll move to approve.
Any further discussion on this?
I'll just take you off. Okay, I'll move to approve for the $20 for cats, $60 for dogs, and $50 for cats. Oh, $5, okay, sorry. $5 for a cat.
Yeah.
$60 for a dog.
Would you second that, Ernie?
Yes.
Any other discussion on this item? I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie, it's all word. Thank you. We'll move on to item eight. Items for discussion, possible action of the Ely City Council as recommended by the Municipal Utility Board. Item one, board member, city clerk, Lee, discussion for possible action, review of the Georgetown Ranch lease bids, and Municipal Utility Board recommendation of all Georgetown leases.
Ms. Roberts, City Council. These bids were opened this morning at the Utilities Board. We were seeing four. I'll go through them in order of amount. So I'll start with Ted Peggy. His, his rate was $12,513.37 per year with a 2%, I should say, a 2% increase per year by your term. If you'd like me to go through all the terms as far as what they're stating, I'll do with the property, I can do that as well.
Just be mindful.
I did, so I'll have the bids this afternoon. The second one is from Gail Cavencanti. Annual lease payment is $9,000.
Annual lease payment is $9,600.